What do you mean?
Man, I don't want to say.
I love that takes like a solid like.
All right. Good morning, everybody. It's Wednesday, September 11. And we didn't really talk about this, but I think we should give a moment of silence for all the people we lost on September 11, 2021, 2001. Thank you very much. All right. Any public comment? Anybody in here that has a public comment? Anybody online that has a public comment? Okay, well, Katie, can I see up there?
Good morning. Can you hear me okay? Excellent. Thank you for letting me call in. I have a skeleton crew right now. People are getting married and all kinds of things. So, and I'm in Alaska today. So calling from an incredible view of the Kachemec Bay to update you on a contract. We have in front of you an OHA amendment. One of the last amendment I brought to you was the one that transitioned us from last fiscal year to this fiscal year. And I mentioned there would probably be a handful of additional ones as they closed the books, as we closed the books and as Oregon Health Authority wraps up there. So this is the first of what I anticipate, at least one more, maybe two, that reflects the truing up of the books from last fiscal year. There was nothing that was unanticipated. So it it all aligns up with the budget that we originally proposed at the county level. And so I I have no concerns. It it's just taking a while to get everything in place for this fiscal year.
Great. You need questions?
No.
No?
So this can be moved just over into the consent agenda, Katie?
Yeah, that would be great.
Okay.
Thank you all.
Thank you. Have a good time up there.
You're yourself. Well?
Good morning, commissioners. We are here to talk about the the buy up, buy up. The which is sort of the biological opinion.
Is that is that something needs to be removed?
What?
That a biopsy?
It should be removed, yes. Similarity. So anyways, I'm going to turn this over to Katie to discuss. This is an issue I've I've brought up in passing a couple of times in the past. So just wanted an opportunity to discuss it in a little more a little more detail this morning.
Thank you. Yeah, thank you.
Take me one second.
Yeah, there is.
Good morning. So we're gonna just touch briefly on the FEMA pre-implementation for the NFIP ESA. So there's going to be a lot of acronyms in here. So it's the National Flood Insurance Program. That's the Endangered Species Act. And the BIOP is the biological opinion that, so if there is an acronym that you're like, hey, well, what was that? Let me know, because I can kind of gloss over them at this point. Go ahead and go to the next slide. So the National Flood Insurance Program was launched in 68, 1968 for sorry, I just saw Josh back there for a minute. I'm like. So it was a program, it's a federally backed insurance program that allows people to have flood insurance in areas that are that are prone to flooding. And what that did is that allowed mortgage buy downs and insurance programs to be in communities where it wouldn't necessarily be offered. And in exchange for that, it had local jurisdictions implement development, not restrictions, but floodproofing development and kind of guiding where development should be, right? Don't build in the floodway. Don't, you know, if you can, let's move it out to protect people's resources and dollars. So Cook County and the city of Pinedale are both participants in that program, have been participants for a very long time. And therefore, the FEMA regulations that and the information, legal opinions that are coming out now affect people in Cook County. So go ahead and to the next slide. So background. Why we're kind of here today is in 2009, there was a lawsuit brought against FEMA and specifically in Oregon, in 2010, they settled that and said, okay, we're going to work with the National Marine Fisheries Services to figure out if there's an effect on endangered and threatened species throughout Oregon and affecting those critical habitats by the regulations that are put in place through land use, building codes through with the overarching national floodplain insurance program, right? So they worked on that. And then in 2016, issued the biological opinion that determined, yeah, probably there's negative impact there and started working on doing the, this is the one that I forgot. The NEPA, so the National Environmental Policy Act, and it was this the intent to do an environmental impact statement, so an EIS that would really look at what those effects are. And so that was 2023. We're still waiting for that environmental impact statement has not come out. However, FEMA has said we're going to go ahead and start these implementation measures now. And local jurisdictions, we want you to be in the participatory range. They did go out in 23 and had scoping groups and certain people in working on it. Obviously, in the coast and the and the valley, flooding and estuaries and marshes are much larger deal than they are here, but we're still affected, right? So then in 2024, this spring, they started ramping up. And then in August, they held the end of July and August, they held meetings, informational meetings that said, hey, we're going to start implementing this process. And go ahead and go to the next one. So August 1, FEMA has stopped reviewing what are called LOMARS and CLOMARS. So a LOMAR is a letter of map revision. So let's say that your property was mapped in the floodplain and it's really, it's not. And so you can do, you can work with a surveyor and submit a letter of map revision to FEMA. They review it. Yes or no, they take you out of the floodplain. A CLOMAR is just a conditional letter of map revision. So as of August 1, they stopped reviewing those. They're putting a pause on those which can affect housing developments, it can affect other things down the down the path, because it is a process for this stuff. These are the 30 counties that are affected that it applies to, right? So almost all of Cook County, there's a tiny little sliver that's not in their map, but all of Cook County is included in this. On page two of the memo, right above the concerns paragraph, it kind of lists like Crooked River Watershed, Ocheco Creek, Johnson Creek, Oliver Creeks, Oliver Reservoirs, those all are impacted with this. So go ahead and next. So what FEMA is asking local jurisdictions to do is to pick a pick 'em, a pre-implementation compliance measure by December 1, 2024. Now, again, we still don't have the environmental impact statement. So we still don't know the extent that things are are affected. They just said, yes, they're affected and we need to move forward. So they're giving three options at this point. The one is to just say, you're in the floodplain, no development. Just no.
No.
Huh? You're in, you're in. So sorry. That's a bummer. Two is to adopt a model code update to include those Endangered Species Act measures. So Oregon in 2019 did a model floodplain code. Cook County has not adopted that base Oregon model floodplain code. It is something that we're working on doing that. However, as of right now, we still have our original 2003 codified, which moved forward from some of the original zoning. So it's pretty outdated is our current code language. But what FEMA has asked is that there are additional language changes in that Oregon floodplain code. And some of those are contradictory with the Nash, the Natural Hazards Mitigation Plan that they've put out at the same time. So in one document, it might be defined a little differently than in the other document. Or it is regulated in one document and not regulated in the other document, or to the extent that they're regulated. So there's definite concerns there.
So Katie, just to get.
Yeah.
So the state has a model floodplain code.
Yes.
It sounds like FEMA says, yeah, that's still not good enough. I want you to make changes to the model code.
Yes, they have, they have issued updates to that model floodplain code.
And have you heard or does your crystal ball tell you the state says, yes, that's a good idea. Let's make those changes?
No. It's a little cloudy in the crystal ball still. So that's option number two. Option number three is that every application that comes in or permit that comes in for development where we would require that is in a mapped area would have to do an individual habitat assessment. And that habitat assessment FEMA says has to be done by a professional. But then there's not certified professionals in that field. So it would be, you know, we're looking at habitat. A biologist would be a very good person to probably look at habitat. However, biologists are not certified or licensed. So how do you have a licensed professional do the habitat assessment? So there's, there's nuances in that aspect as well. They are, again, they're asking the communities to pick one by December 1. So one, two, or three, if you do not pick, it's going to default to the permit by permit. And they want, they've asked to start collecting data through a data portal as of January 2024. However, the requirement to report data is not going to be required until January 2025. And again, we still don't have the EIS. So go ahead and go next slide. So some key concerns here is, one, what is their regulatory authority? This is a national flood insurance program that provides insurance. This is optional for jurisdictions. This is a benefit for community members. This is a benefit for homeowners, property owners to have nationally backed, an option for nationally backed insurance, right? Flood insurance. In Oregon, the floodplain is managed under DLCD. So the Department of Land Conservation Development, which then puts it under land use, which has a whole another set of regulations for timing and public process and notice and takings and Measure 37, 49, Measures 56. And FEMA is not a regulatory agency, right? So they're saying, if you want to continue to utilize our program and be a community, we need to make these changes. DLCD is at the table, but they have not issued like, okay, land use planners, this is how this is going to work with the state of Oregon land use code being specific as it is. I have not heard of any other jurisdiction, city or county moving like really moving forward on this at this point. We're all still kind of sitting back and waiting to hear what's going to happen. Another one, so there's also conflicting with other state mandates, right? So if you can develop a piece of property for urban housing, right? Housing shortage, but then FEMA won't process the letter of map revision that then allows the development. How does this play out, right? So how to, how, has anyone been talking to each other at the state level? What happens if we just say, okay, we're not going to play in the sandbox anymore, right? Thank you. There are private insurance offerings now, not federally backed. Then potential risk is disaster and relief funding, right? National disaster and relief funding may not be available. So there's definite considerations.
Isn't it a lot more expensive too for private flood insurance versus, maybe it's like vast?
Yes, because I had flood insurance down at my beach house, my girl's own right now, and private got so prohibitive and we moved to FEMA.
Yeah.
And it's very reasonable. My question is, is if you don't play and I'm on the river, can I get FEMA insurance at this point in time? Right now? Is that a way, is that not offered now?
We are still participating.
So it doesn't affect our citizens as of right now?
Correct. Yeah.
That's a big concern.
There's been no change. This is all speculative in that what is actually going to come from this. But right now, the ask is what pre-implementation measure are you going to do? So another concern are the timelines. So again, this is, this is overseen by land use and DLCD and LCDV, right? So that's where it is. However, the mitigation for development, right? So you build, it's building codes. So you increase, you put in flood vents, you go a foot above base elevation. Those are all building code requirements. So it's a real, it crosses that policy line. So staff time in trying to implement one of these, implement these measures, like who's going to, who's going to read a habitat assessment? Biology is fascinating, but I'm not a biologist. Planners are generally not biologists. Building codes folks are generally not biologists. How, how does that work? How are other things going to come in? Are we going to have to pay for some, for an outside agent to process that? Is that going to be passed on to a property owner, right? So there's a lot of intricacies in timeliness, staff time, it's going to add more time to a review, which is set by that state standards. And then again, the cost to the property owners, really like how, how can we still protect our, our neighbors? Go ahead to the next one is the next steps. So we're gonna, the end of September, we have Louie presenting to the planning commission regarding the Oregon Model Floodplain, getting at least that step updated. And so we have a better better code to help protect them. The association, so the ASCPD is doing a special meeting solely on this issue from a couple of planning directors who have been more heavily involved in it. So they're dedicating a full meeting to see how this might play out in their jurisdictions. And then FEMA is going to be doing additional trainings and information webinars regarding what the different options are, where they're at in their process. And Katrina and I are working with our GIS with Jack to make sure that our floodplain layer on GIS is up to date versus what FEMA has on their firm panels on their mapping, just making sure that those have all been updated and, and so that we have a clear picture. Right now, it looks like there's about 1,200 plus parcels that have FEMA mapped floodplain on them. And they're not all where you would think they are. There's some that are irrigation canals. There are some that are pivots. There are some that are dry creeks, you know, 300 days out of the year. So it really is a benefit to the property owner to know if they're mapped or not mapped. So that's all I really have is just kind of give you the broad overview and kind of what we're doing on planning staff. Will, do you have anything to add?
Just, just some kind of high, higher level comments. So first off, I think it's really important that the county and the city, and I appreciate Josh and Derek being here. I think it's important that we can put our kind of move forward in a similar direction. So I guess it'd be important to coordinate with, with city staff. And also, I think it's going to be important for the city council and the board of commissioners to also take a role in reaching out to our legislators at the federal level to make sure they're aware of this issue. And I know I've talked to Commissioner Barney about this, but there, there was a letter that went out a few weeks ago from the, the congressional, the Democrats in the Oregon congressional delegation, but Representative Benz wasn't on there and the other Republican wasn't on that letter as well. So I just, I think it's important that we touch base with them, make sure they're aware of the issue and are helping to try and fix this at the, at the federal level. I know there were efforts several years ago knowing that this was in the works to try and fix this through Congress. It obviously did not happen. We're here today as a result of, of that not, not happening. I think there's some real concern that this, you know, this will have a much, much greater impact on communities on the coast and, and areas where there are more significant floodplains, but we have floodplain in the city as, as Katie's slides and the memo note, we have over 1,200 tax lots in, in the floodplain here in Cook County. You know, it feels like death by a thousand cuts when you think about the wildfire risk map where we have 1,500 plus properties that are in the high levels in Louis, and then we've got 1,200 lots now that are in the floodplain, like the, the restrictions on development just keep piling up on our rural lands here in Cook County. And it just makes it that much more difficult to build up our housing stock to ensure that development costs are reasonable. So it just, it has an impact on our community. So notwithstanding the fact that other communities in the state will be more greatly impacted. This is an issue I think we need to stay on top of. And then while staff, while we can continue to work with what we're being told by FEMA, we have to do. I do think that we need to take some steps to work with, work with Congress, work with the state to try and, try and minimize the impact. Ideally, you know, I, I know this biological opinion, it sounds like it impacts California to a certain extent and Washington to a certain extent, but I think the geographic impact is much smaller in those states. It feels a little bit like Oregon's being singled out in this and it just, the, the equity when other states aren't being put through the same kind of requirements when it comes to development and floodplain, it just, it seems unfair. So I just, this is an issue that I guess my ask of the commission is that we, we stay on top of it and we, we push version events to, to take an active role in trying to help minimize the impact. Ideally, this would go away and we'd continue on to the current situation with FEMA. But that may not happen. We may, we may be stuck with this and FEMA is taking the position they're not the regular regulatory authority. It's the local jurisdictions that are electing to opt in to the National Flood Insurance Program that are the regulatory authority. So if we have to adopt, if we have to adopt the, this model code or we're, we go permit by permit, we're the, we're the, you know, the city and the county are the ones that are at risk of having to deal with takings claims and, and other issues that may arise when we say because of this new regulatory scheme, you can't, you can't develop here. So there's, you know, there's just, there's some big concerns and I, you know, I, I wanted to make sure we got this in front of the commission so we could have this conversation. In the near term, December 1 is a deadline where we're going to have to make a decision on one of those pick 'em options. And I think this is one of those areas where it's really important that the city and the county can take the same, same approach to that.
What about the new Supreme Court decision with the Chevron deal? Does that, with Chevron doctrine, does that apply here at all where you're having a non-elected person make decisions? Do they get around it by making the counties decide like you were saying, or?
I'm assuming that the, the route they're going, I haven't personally done an analysis of that case to see how it may impact what, what FEMA is proposing here. And you know, there's, there's at least one group out there that is trying to you know, get an attorney on board and, and challenge some of this in, in the court. And so I, I would assume that somebody's looking at that, but I don't, I can't speak to that.
I think I'd like to, after the planning commission raise in, I think it would be good if you could come back and report on what their opinion was after you do your your meeting and that. And then my second question is, if we didn't adopt this FEMA, we become, would that then prohibit the homeowners from getting the insurance? Is that a possibility?
At, at some point, I, I wouldn't imagine it would be like a flip, a light switch gets flipped.
I mean, at some point, they might say, you're not adopting this, so therefore you don't get insurance, which does put our citizens at risk, because I do know the difference in cost and it's significant.
Well, and wouldn't it then not only not allow more people to get on, but wouldn't it also kick off the people that are currently on?
So that's one of the, one of the things, one of the, one of the things that FEMA, and, and I don't know the answer to that question. I think you're probably right. One of the things that FEMA doubts when they talk about the NFIP is that unlike a private insurer who could, you know, like we've seen with the wildfires, they, you know, in California, they could say, we're not going to insure this area anymore. Once you start paying your premiums, as long as you pay your premiums under the, through the NFIP, they can't kick you off. But if we are no longer part of the program, I would assume that that would change.
Apply to this area anymore. It's, they would not kick you off. It just wouldn't be part of the system.
Yeah, that's basically devastating if you go private versus.
And you know, the, the flood insurance is a requirement when you have a mortgage, right? So you don't, you're not necessarily required to have insurance if you don't have a mortgage. So I don't know how that would, like, if you're in the middle of paying off a mortgage and all of a sudden then FIP insurance is no longer available to you. Yes, I, for that reason, I think it will take a little bit of time. I think some notice would be required. FEMA would be having conversations with us, I would assume about, you know, what our plan is. I wouldn't imagine it would be instant in, most likely, but the, you know, I, I have heard that flood insurance has become more affordable, which is private, in the private sector than it was historically, which is kind of surprising because private, in the private sector, um, than it was historically, which is kinda surprising, cause um, other insurance seems to be getting only more expensive. Uh, so anyways, I, I, that's a part of the conversation, but the, more importantly, right now, I think is just, we need some pressure put on decision makers to try and minimize the latest and hopefully roll some of the requirements back. Uh, but on our side, we'll just, you know, we'll continue to, this is gonna be a requirement until we get direction. That we don't wanna be a part of the NFIP, um, we, we don't have a lot of options. We need to move forward in one way or another.
Is it, it's premature at this point for us to do a letter, right? We should wait until planning commission lays in and are, are something that we wanna do a letter. Sorry, Eric. Do, do we, I, we wanna do a letter with the position stated or everything?
There is, the letter that uh, Will was talking about is in the packet. Um, so we included that. Um, that is the I'm gonna say, it's the last attachment, um, of the August twenty-second letter. Um, so that is what was sent in. I believe some jurisdictions have already started to send letters.
So, but we want to make our legislators say, do we need to re- redirect this letter, I guess as well.
That would be a question for Ben. Jay and Will.
I think um, I know we made, we made an effort to reach out to Representative Benz's office and be ever, do you know, we ever got a call? I think a letter to his office would probably be um, good at this point since we haven't heard back. Um, we, we did, my recollection is last year when, when some of the pre-environmental impact statement work was being done, we did submit comments at that point. Um, we, I was just trying to pull those out, but, so we have submitted comments and expressed concern in the past, but I think, you know, I, I don't know that a letter coming from community development for FEMA is gonna do any good at this point. But I do think it's worth, we're reaching out to our um, you know, our congressional delegation and trying to ensure they're, they at least know we're also aware of it. It's not just the coastal counties that have concern. Yeah.
Let me call him before we send the letter.
We have, whether you manage your speed port, if you and I have reached out to him, maybe we should.
I'm gonna go for shot.
I mean, I just, I mean, we can still send a letter. I just, I can't stand when we just send, I mean, you've tried to call, but I'm, I'm just, let me go.
Yeah, I think we should probably just remember to send a letter so that it's documented. Sure.
And we can, we can put that together and, and in the meantime, and we'll bring it back for the, for the board to sign.
Isn't that a very bad letter?
No, no. It's not anything, there's nothing negative towards the representative at this point.
No threatening, it's just.
Just.
And I agree with Brian, we need to document it.
Josh, do you have anything you wanna add from cities?
You guys, you guys said it all. We, we do wanna be on the same page. I, I honestly think, if you wanna pick what we can do is three, then you don't know how to do it. And that's the problem, is that when the first rolls around, you don't wanna adopt a model code because it's terrible. Uh, we did adopt twenty nineteen version, so we're up to date on ours. But if you try to adopt it now, you've got a bunch of stuff from it that you don't want. And I don't think you guys would pass it anywhere. Um, so you're gonna be left with option three and I, I would even know. You're gonna, if you, you wanna, you wanna open a biological opinion office, that would be the time to do it, you know, charge five thousand dollars and then just fix stuff up. Because that's, that's what it's gonna be. Um, so if we're on the same page, doing the same thing, if we choose to do nothing, that, so we both should do nothing. If we choose to farm it out, and we'll both farm it out to the same things, we'll use the same building apartment. So we just wanna be on the same page on that. Um, I agree, we need to, the group that ironically is the Oregon floodplain, what is it? Uh, Oregonian floodplain protection, they're the other group that's trying to, to, to all to it. There are a lot of coastal counties and things that, a lot of angles pushing, I think FEMA has basically said, we fought our fight, they're done. Um, they're gonna use the voluntary position of each community to, as they're out. You guys don't have to do this, but that's kind of unfortunate because they spent sixty years putting people in the program and now they're changing the rules vastly and saying, oh, you know, oh, well, that's, that's just not really okay. They need to slow, if you're gonna do something different, you have to do it over time as we did. So, you know, there's a lot of different ways to, say, to buy up programs or stuff like that. It would slow back people out with the floodplain as they flooded. Instead of just performing actions to, to stop everything, so. We'll see what happens, um, but I think the only fix is truly our congressional fix. I don't know how else to do it.
But it isn't based on insurance, it's based on?
It's based on ESA, so ESA is coming at us and they're using the floodplain insurance program because they, and they don't disagree with the opinion and they're not wrong. And that's why they learned the law. Um, the flood insurance program has basically forced for the last sixty years, you know, pushing people to develop in the floodplain. Yeah, okay, it's why it has an impact. But the rules they're changing are, are affecting areas that have nothing to do with, have, their fourth street doesn't have any effect. But it's in the floodplain, so how do you do an habitat assessment on fourth street? Uh, that doesn't make any sense, you know, they stopped the LoMars and BoMars, it all stopped, one of our housing developments up here. Uh, we got it in the day before, so they, they processed it. Um, so how do you, how do you actually move forward in some of these? These acts, I don't know, I don't know how you're gonna do that. I can understand doing something right next to the creek, but a hundred and seventy-foot setback is where they're talking? That's, you're, you're getting into downtown private.
Yes.
And I also was uh, in regards to Oregonians for floodplain protection. They had a large meeting about a month ago. Go, I was part of a lot of representatives from the coast, from the valley were present. A lot of uh, state politicians were involved. Uh, there was a council that they were looking at utilizing out of Seattle of our, your firm. And they were in the process of raising money. Um, they were trying to do kind of a three-pronged attack congressional legislative. And then trying to get a work group together to be a resource for different communities on what to, what to do with the victims. I, I'm with Josh in that I think the only viable option to third, I think if we do the second, we have significant takings issues, at least the city does. Um, reliability. According to uh, the governor's office now apparently is involved, they weren't involved previously. Uh, many believe in that meeting that a lot of these uh, efforts like FEMA are directly contradictory to COTEX, Governor COTEX's uh, mission to build housing in the, in state, so there's some hope maybe the governor's office can do something. According to that group, a lot of the congressional staffs, uh, like the ones on the Hill, uh, had no idea about a lot of this. And so educating the uh, representatives, I think will be important, uh, at least. It, it, it seemed as to me, and this was just an inference, I made, that this was a, you know, this is obviously a big issue, but there's just so many big issues that this is always like, you know, twelfth or thirteenth on the list of everybody. And so without that constant reminder that it is much more important, it's probably gonna continue to get lost in the shuffle. Uh, in twenty twenty, Congressman DeFosse, he actually got this the lead for three years. This was a problem three years ago, but then it just kinda boiled up. Um, with everything going on, so um, with that group, they, they, it, it appeared to me as if uh, I think a lot of folks are just kinda waiting for maybe a, a um, a litigation stall to this implementation, but in reality, there can't really be a, a suit until you actually have damage, so it, it won't stall it. And then second, and then the other thing, I think the other big takeaway that I will share with this group is that the, the lawyer out of uh, I'm sorry, I don't remember her name, but she had a lot of experience working with FEMA on a lot of different matters, and it was her opinion that a sort of negative um, input. So basically FEMA removing jurisdictions from the program would be a slow process. So it would not, you know, happen, I, it, it, if we're, if the city of Frynville is uh, is not in compliance on December the second, I highly doubt we're the only jurisdiction in Oregon not compliant. So uh, it was her opinion that it would, it would take months, perhaps years to even have, you know, a jurisdiction we take out of program, but I'm just relying on, on her opinion.
Yeah, I think there haven't been a lot of people that bargained through this, all the irrigation districts. And all the, and, and all the other federal agencies, just balled down the theme at this point.
So for next steps, it sounds like, it's like you're gonna get hundreds of, that's a call, try to get his office. And then I, a letter will be drafted to the Oregon congressional delegation. Kinda bike this to their attention. Are there other next steps, at least for the immediate future?
No, there's not, it doesn't sound like much else we can do. I'm, I'm with Josh, I don't see any other option besides the permit by permit basis and eventually I think somebody will get in a situation where they lose and then they can go to court and sue the government and or some other entity can, can take up their case and.
Do you mean a motion from us for that drafting of the letter, or when the letter's drafted, then we move, we move to accept it? Okay, and I am interested to hear what the planning commission lays in on that, so if we can have a report about that, just to see what they all think. Yeah.
And we'll also, we'll, before the December first deadline, we'll, you know, give the board another update on where we are. We'll continue to coordinate with.
Yeah, I think that's one of our most important things, just continuing to work with the city. Or the, we're all saying vote together, so.
Sounds good.
Ricky. Good presentation.
Josh.
Not good news. Thank you.
All right, uh, Will, do you have anything? Uh, I don't, have you got?
What's any commissioner updates?
I got a commission update, now I can't remember what it is.
About the Senator Horry? I'm just.
No. Oh, that's my update, I have my, oh, I know what it was, is that we had a public health meeting. We had Mosaic at the table and we had our public health director, Katie Plum, and we had Todd Shields. And we're moving forward, we're doing the heat map to see where our needs are in the county. And uh, what else are we doing? Well, we're doing a couple different things.
We're, we're also, well, Josh just left, but we'll coordinate with city staff to kinda make sure we understand what their planned growth is.
Yes, so that we can get, expand what our heat map would actually, because like, we know that there's gonna be those three hundred apartments over by the hospital. So now you're, it's moved, so yeah, we're gonna do that and we're gonna meet the first week in November and kinda come back with what we have. And uh, no, we're all, we're all positive.
Yeah, I thought it was a very positive, positive meeting. Um, I think, you, you know, everybody seemed to be in alignment that we should be taking a twenty-five to fifty-year look, you know, view on this and making sure we're making the, the right decision, we're not, we're not just doing something out of need in the, in the short term, but looking to the future. Um, so Mosaic has, you know, they have some stuff coming up that they're gonna be doing some capital fundraising for their facility and in Finn and um, so it might not be something that we get an answer to, you know, this calendar year, but uh, everybody seemed interested in exploring what our, what our options are, so it seemed very positive.
Yeah, I thought it was very good, you know, like I say, we're looking out there, we're looking out into the future, not for an immediate. Yes, we do know that our lease runs out and all that, but that isn't the criteria that's really us for, we're going for the camp. So I think it'll be, I think we're, I think we're in the right spot. I think we're all, you know, wanting to do what's best for the citizens, so I was, I, I felt really good after me.
Yeah, I thought it was very good.
Good thing I remembered. The positive.
Well, I don't know if we said in the meeting, but congratulations to Brian for getting a final on the uh, Justice Center.
Oh.
Yeah, I know you've been working extremely hard on that and.
Thank you, that was uh, yeah, we are rounding this corner, we, twenty-seven, there's, we're in betting and uh, we'll bring furniture in and it's, we're gonna ride along, it's a nice facility. It's gonna serve our community well for a long time.
It looks great.
Are we ready? The county court board of commissioners will now meet in executive session. One nine two six six zero eight, including the council, which really worries us. With public body with regard to. Did you guys have something? You just wanted to come hang out with us? Who, you too?
I just, I am.
Okay.
They like us.
I'm glad to see you, I just, it's even better when I hear from you.
Yeah, I just wanted to walk in the rain.
Okay. Regarding current litigation, litigation likely filed, also ORS one nine two six six zero two A. Consider the employment of a public officer, employee, staff member, individual agent. Representatives in this meeting and designated staff shall be allowed to attend the executive session. All in honor of the audience trust, the representative in this meeting is specifically directed at reporting deliberations during the executive session. Except to state the general subject concessions previously announced, and a decision may be made in the executive session. At the end of the executive session, we turn to open session, walking the lines back in the room. Three county board of commissioners will now leave the executive session, or ORS one nine two six six zero two H, controlled with country continually, the rights of means. The public body with regard to current litigation, the litigation likely filed, ORS one nine two six six zero two A. Consider the employment of a public officer, employee, staff member, individual agent. Representatives in this meeting and designated staff shall be allowed to attend the executive session, all in honor of the audience trust. Representatives in this meeting are specifically directed at reporting deliberations during the executive session. Except to state the general subject concessions previously announced, and a decision may be made in the executive session. The end of the record session, we turn to open session, walking the lines back in the room.
Um, we need to make a motion and I would request that possibly legal help me with that motion, please. He's working on that right now. Perfect. John, will you have one for yours?
No motions for two H's.
So uh, based on the discussion, what I might suggest is a motion to delegate authority to Will Van Vactor to create a tender and offer of engagement for the county manager position on behalf of Kirk County.
So moved.
So.
Any discussion? Well, there's a favor?
You got the job.
Lucky me. Nope.
Good.